I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:00. And we're going to start with a pledge. And the flag's over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a root and justice for all.
So I want to first welcome back Liz and Christine to the board table. And I also want to welcome and congratulate Sylvie, Beth, and Sarah. So we're all very excited for this board meeting.
First of all, I just want to say thank you all so much for your confidence in me and support. This is such an incredible opportunity. The fact that it was unanimous by this entire board speaks volumes about what we can do going forward. And I'm so excited to work with you all. I think this sets a tone, a very positive tone. I am so hopeful and I'm so grateful. I want to congratulate Liz Fitzsimmons on being nominated vice chair. Liz has worked tirelessly for this community and for this board for many years. She's going to be an amazing partner for me and for all of us. I want to congratulate our newly elected board members, Christine Arnold, Sylvie Benet, Liz Fitzsimmons, Sarah Healy, Beth Kintner, and extend a special warm welcome to Sylvie and to Beth and to Sarah. So as I said, I look around this table and I am really excited and I'm very optimistic. This is a very exciting time for our district with the potential of a new high school on the horizon, our groundbreaking work in academic achievement and culture and climate in our schools, and our continued focus on social and emotional learning for our students. So we should feel very proud of this work. But tonight, my optimism is really fueled by all of you. I just see an incredible opportunity for us to create a very collaborative environment on this board. You know, we're all here because we chose to do something very meaningful to give back to our community. We care about Farmington Public Schools. We care not only about our children, but all children. We have that common ground already, and I really hope that we can all build on that. I truly believe that by moving the board forward with a collaborative spirit, along with our superintendent Kathy Greeter, our central office administration, and our district leadership team, that having us all work together will give all of our work more meaning. And we will get a lot done. As a leader, my goal is to make sure that everyone on this board is heard and valued and has everything they need to make decisions on the issues that are going to face us. Communication is really important to me. I will be responsive. I will be honest, hopefully helpful. And I encourage you to reach out to me anytime with any questions or concerns. Will we always agree? Probably not, but I want to get there together, listening to each other's perspectives, searching for common ground, and always doing what's best for the students and families of Farmington. So again, I can't thank you enough for this unanimous support of myself and for Liz. You'll never know how much that means to me. And so Liz say something and then we will get started.
So I want to thank all of you as well. Welcome to Sylvie and to Sarah and to Beth to this table. And I want to thank all of you for your support. It means a lot to me that all of you trust me with this position. And I can't say anything more than what Ellen has just said. But thank you, Ellen, for trusting me to be your partner. I will do my best to live up to your expectations. And I hope that we will go forward on this board in a collaborative manner. And I think that what we've just done here with this first step speaks measures to what we're going to be able to achieve. We have a lot to do, and I think that we're going to do great things. I think we're going to do it together. We're going to work together. And I look forward to doing it with you. Before we leave tonight, anybody who doesn't have my phone number, I want to make sure you have it. And anytime you want to ask me anything or run something by me, I want you to be able to reach out and do that. I want us to be able to communicate anytime about anything. And that's the goal that I want to have. I want us to be able to work together. So thank you. And I also want to say that sitting here is a whole different perspective. I've sat over there, I've sat here. But it's actually like, you know, it's a metaphor. It's symbolic, I think, of my new perspective for my next time here. So I can see everything from here. I can see the whole board. I can see the whole room. I can see the speakers. I can see all of the people in the room. And I couldn't see that before. So it's kind of, it's interesting to me that that's from sitting here, that you have that perspective. So I think it means something. So I'm going to leave you with that. So thank you to Ellen. Thank you to Kathy. And thank you to all of you for believing in us.
Okay, so at this time, we want to move forward the agenda. Agenda item four, approval of minutes from the December 9, 2019. Board of Education, regular meeting. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any questions, comments, amendments?
Ellen?
Yes.
The person who gave public comment, his last name is spelled incorrectly. There's only one N. It's N-A-N-O-S.
Thank you. We also got our state rep Mike Demicco's name wrong. D-E-M-I-C-C-O on page one. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Abstain.
Oh, okay. And that's a good point, Sarah. If you're not at a board meeting prior at the meeting that we're approving, you can abstain.
Ellen, do you ever have a situation where you run into a problem with quorum when that happens with abstentions?
No. Because I would think that the meeting already happened and it was okay. Next item on the agenda, item six, consideration of superintendent's report. Item A, preliminary technology budget.
So each year at this time, we provide a preliminary budget presentation related to technology. At the next board meeting, there will be a staffing presentation and a special services presentation. So we're preparing for the budget season. And there's so much within our budget, so we try to provide presentations along the way. And so Matt Ross is our director of technology in Farmington. He does an exemplary job. And he's just, you know, he's put us in an excellent position as a school district when it comes to technology. And, you know, you will see a lot of Matt throughout the year. So Matt, you can begin your presentation.
Thank you. Just a quick note for those that are new. The format was slightly different. We kind of changed things up to allow for kind of more efficiencies in the preliminary technology because this is just preliminary. So each year, I put out a little screencast with the presentation ahead of time. So you kind of get the preview or get all the speech that goes with the slides. And then I come tonight to kind of summarize that and answer any questions that you might have. So thank you for 2021. This year, we've got some of the same as we've seen over the past years in terms of the drivers of the technology budget. Really, what's driving the increase in costs this year are operational licenses or licensing, the software licensing that's tied to applications that are key to the operation of the district. Things like the finance system, like our HR system, like our bus system, like our student information system are all key. All have built-in increases each year from the vendors. In addition to that, we brought in three new applications over the past year. And those were to enhance our operational efficiencies, more specifically in our HR area, but also around mandated training. And really, it comes down to tracking the trainings themselves and the folks in the district and whether or not they're completing those trainings. And there's quite a few. The other piece, the other area where we're seeing an increase this year in the technology budget is around network and end user protection. And this relates to some of the recent cybersecurity attacks that we've seen around the state against both school districts as well as municipalities. While we have protections in place, there are new developments in this area of technology. And there have been several recent conferences that brought municipalities, higher ed, and K-12 together to discuss what can be done collectively, but what also can be done within our own environments to ensure the greatest amount of protection. The other piece, which I'm sure we're going to talk about tonight, that while it's not a large cost increase driver, is our Chromebook initiative. And we previewed last year, we talked a little bit about it during the budget season last year, that over the past four years or so, we have fielded several questions about why doesn't Farmington do a take-home one-to-one? Why were we in a classroom model? And a lot of that was driven by cost, cost of devices, cost of overhead. And what we've seen over the past four to five years is the cost of the devices come down and our ability to achieve that type of a program and the opportunities that it affords to our students come about. So for this budget year, I am proposing that we shift to a take-home one-to-one for grades five through 12. And I can go into that in more detail. And like I said, I'm sure you guys have questions. Is it that?
Well, that's what you talked about last year.
Right.
Questions for Matt?
I think maybe you could just go into why we're doing it five through 12.
Yeah. So I'm going to pull up the slide here where we've got the details. So really what it comes down to, grades five through 12, our students are utilizing the technology more, both in and out of school, for curriculum support. While we don't have a large number of students that don't have access to technology outside of school, we do have a number of students that don't. And we have provided for those students. But what we have found is there's a gap. There's an after-school gap. Excel does provide a handful of Chromebooks for the students that they serve after school. But at the five through 12, we have intramurals. We have after-school sports at the high school. There's other clubs and activities. And there are times during that time period, from the time the school dismisses to the time that the student gets home, that they may not have access to technology. And they could be doing something that's tied to their curriculum in that downtime. At the same time, we're also looking to serve the needs of all of our students from an equity perspective and from a safety perspective. So by us allowing devices to go home with the students, some of the protections that we provide in our network follow that student home. We have, in the last year, taken on a new internet filter. We've done a little bit of piloting. Beth was actually one of our pilot testers of the parent piece that goes along with our internet filter. And while we have not rolled that out widely, mostly because I kind of want to roll out with the take-home one-to-one if possible, it does allow a parent to see what their student is browsing on the internet when signed into their district Chromebook using their district username. So it's a multi-pronged approach. The K-4 perspective, we're going to stick with the classroom carts. At that age, there is not a large amount of technology-based homework or technology-based curriculum support that the students can't access and by other means. So at this point, we're going to hold off on the K-4. And we're going to, as well as the fact that they'd have to transport it back and forth to school, we're going to stick with five to 12. The base model would be that students entering fifth and ninth grade would receive a new Chromebook. They would have that Chromebook for four years. At the end of eighth grade and at the end of 12th grade, what I'm proposing, based on talking to other districts and looking at how the technology is supported, is we will attempt to collect the devices back. Those devices can then be turned in, which we do today. We turn those devices in to a recycling company who then gives us credit for parts, to purchase parts to fix additional Chromebooks. The other piece to that, you know, we did weigh the option of students just kind of walking with it because a four-year-old Chromebook is not totally useful. But the piece that really kind of tipped the scale is Google is really trying to stick to a four-year support model in terms of updates on their own. So at the end of that four years, even if the student were to walk with that Chromebook, it's not going to receive the latest updates. And therefore, itself is not necessarily the most useful thing to the student. So at this point, the part of the proposal is that we would try to collect those devices back. And it may give us an opportunity to then roll those, depending on the condition, roll them back down to K-4 if there were some other needs that we had. We are looking at a self-insurance model for the Chromebook program. I'm proposing $35 a year. That would cover repairs, two claims per year, which would essentially be that, you know, we're not trying to recover the full amount of the Chromebook itself. It's enough to encourage the student to take responsibility, but also to cover them as necessary. Some examples of parts that we commonly replace, keyboards, which run about $20, and motherboards, and screens. Screens run about $50. Motherboards run about $100. So those are just some examples of the costs that we do already incur and how we are looking to offset some of the repair costs of the district through this self-insurance program and also encourage students to take responsibility for the device. In terms of how we phase into this, what we've done over the past two years with our Chromebook purchasing is a portion of the new devices have already gone into the Westwoods fifth grade. And then they followed the students. So two years ago, we put a batch of Chromebooks into fifth grade at Westwoods. Those devices moved with the students to sixth grade. We also put six devices in sixth grade that year. Those devices moved to Irving Robbins this past summer with the students and are with them in seventh grade. We put new devices in eighth grade this past summer. Those will get reshuffled into high school inventory as well. So we've already started to build in that phase to ensure that students coming in, should this be approved, going into the fall of next year, students are getting current devices or devices that they've already been using that are already on that cycle. The other existing inventory at the middle school and at the high school would then be distributed amongst our 10th through 12th grade students.
I'll wait until you finish.
I'm trying to cover the detail. So the total number of devices that we're looking to purchase for the upcoming year is about 800. Again, I look at where we stand in terms of current student enrollment. We're also looking at about 480 devices at the K-4 level because, again, we do have to continue to maintain our K-4 stock as well. So that's one class worth of devices across the four K-4 schools. And I put this information together regarding pricing in terms of what we've budgeted versus what we spent. And you can see, even the projection for the upcoming year, the cost of the devices has come down enough that we're not spending significantly more to purchase more devices than we have in previous years. The average cost or what we're spending right now for both a device and its accessories, because we would be purchasing cases with these devices that we're letting the students take home, is about $245 a device. And that's based on today's pricing. What happens, though, is all of the manufacturers release new devices in March. And so that pricing will fluctuate slightly. So the $245 is a comfortable location for where I think we sit in terms of purchasing. I'll pause there, yeah.
Well, that kind of gets to my question. So my first is more of a philosophical question for superintendent. And is this, this is new. This is novel. We've kind of had this in the back of our mind for years. Is this a need or a want? That's really what I'm getting at.
Well, I think that we've been a district that held back on doing this because we felt that what we were doing was working. Students had access to technology. We are a little bit behind because most districts have moved to the one-to-one. So I think it would put us in line with many of the districts that we compare ourselves to. And it would create more continuity for our students, you know, from their school day to after school. I think the feature that Matt also provided, is talking about for parents, is, you know, something that I think parents are interested in as well. You know, right now, we have that ability to monitor. And whenever there's any student that's using one of our devices, that there's a concern, we know immediately and we're addressing that. So I do think that at this point, you know, to say, is it a need or a want? I think from a student perspective, it's a need because they need that continuity of using the device. Many of our parents have bought Chromebooks. I know some have done that. This would ensure that they have everything available to them after school that they have during the day, which is not always the case.
But that kind of gets to my question because, you know, of the population of students that we have, I would say, I would, in other words, I don't, you know, if people got brand-new Chromebooks for Christmas, for example, right? Are we going to provide them a new Chromebook in September? And then, and so my feeling on is, with this, I mean, I understand for equity purposes, you have to make it available to everyone. But I guess then the question becomes, if you have, you know, 1,000 kids hypothetically, that would get a Chromebook, but 700 of them are good. They have something. And we're going to buy 1,000 Chromebooks, we only need 300 Chromebooks. You see what I'm saying?
So, yeah. So there's a couple of things, and I'll circle back to on the cost benefit. But really what it comes down to, there's two things there. One is statewide testing. So in order to conduct statewide testing, we have to install a secure application on the Chromebooks. And that can only be done by Chromebooks that we manage. And so therefore, in order for that to happen with personally-owned Chromebooks, we would have to take control of the personally-owned Chromebook, which doesn't always go over well. The second is, and we've kind of kicked it around a couple of times about BYOD, bring your own device. And we've allowed it. However, related to the cybersecurity awareness, we are starting to be advised, even at the K-12 level, to start closing that down. And that's mostly for network security and not knowing what folks are walking in. Even with our guest networks, we're getting, we're starting to get a little nervous about not having full control over what's actually on our network.
So that actually is probably critical to me. It's the number-one driver for doing this, frankly. You know, I appreciate all the other, you know, curriculum-based and all the other parent-based stuff, but this is probably the most significant reason why. Because it closes, gives the district all the opportunity it can to control access points and to minimize risks for ransomware, which we're going to talk about down the road in this presentation as well. So that does make sense to me.
Additionally, from that cost-benefit perspective, we currently maintain more Chromebooks. Take this building, for example, more Chromebooks than we have students. And that's because of that cart model. So because the students move from room to room between classes, they're not carrying a Chromebook with them, the Chromebooks have to be there. So you may have a room that only has 17 students, period one, but has 25 students, period two. We have to stock all of those carts with 25 units. We have not put carts in every classroom here, but that has caused some curricular issues too, where we're having to move carts between periods or teachers are scheduling different rooms. Or there's just some logistical issues. And as we, as we look forward to a new high school, the hope is that, you know, that kind of plays into it as well, that we're not having, there is the potential of more rooms. And this allows a student, they have their device, they're taking it with them.
It gives a lot more flexibility to the high school to be able to provide whatever it needs through the Chromebook because you're not worried about staff stocking classrooms. It's not that, student-based.
And up until the last year or two, the cost of the devices hadn't come down enough to where it really made sense to go that route.
Oh, no, we talked about this five years ago. This was kind of, we were talking about getting iPads at that point.
Right.
And, you know, we'd made the decision, I think, correctly for a Chromebook. So, all right, I think you got my questions.
You go, Bill.
I'm good.
Christine?
Hi, Matt. Thank you. So talk to me a little bit about the insurance. So I don't want to what-if this to death, but two claims per year. What if the third claim, what if it's stolen? What if it's broken beyond repair? What if it's a lemon? Like, there's a lot of variables.
A lot of, so the two claims per year, and then it's the cost of the parts after that. So the two claims should allow, two claims per year should allow for a student, normal wear and tear or accidental damage. Stolen would fall as a claim. So if a device were stolen, the student would have to report it. We would count that as a claim. The student would receive a new device. The goal in talking with all of my colleagues throughout the area, the self-insurance is really there to put some responsibility on the student. But there is always, everyone has said the only way to make this successful is to work with the parents when things happen or work with the student.
So there is a safety net. I mean, if we have a situation, we have to...
Yeah. It would be, well, I say two, there would be exceptions on a case-by-case basis. The same is true, this is opt-in insurance. This is not mandatory insurance. So this is not, you know, your student receives a Chromebook in the fall. You don't have to opt into the insurance. I have heard stories of student breaks a screen and a district will call home and say, hey, here's what it's going to cost, or you could pay for the insurance. So, and there's nothing wrong with that. Again, it's really, it comes down to trying to help minimize the district cost of repair parts and instill that responsibility.
Okay. A sec, Christine. Thank you. Any other questions? Beth?
Matt, so when students take these home, I heard you say they have access through the Farmington Public Schools, their account.
Correct.
Will they have any other access?
At this point, that is not the intention. We're going to lock these down so that the only account that they will be able to log on to that device with is their Farmington account because it is a school device.
It's like their homework folder.
Correct.
I see a lot of benefit as a parent who has to...
Their morning and afternoon binder.
We can make this a planner. It's a side joke.
You can definitely have an electronic planner.
We've had this discussion.
Right, Kim, make it a planner.
Done.
But as a parent, as a parent who has purchased a Chromebook, but now is faced with, it's basically a regular laptop, and getting children to focus on homework when there are so many other things that... I could see this as a real benefit just in terms of that sort of thing. Managing homework at home, which is a challenge in this age of technology.
Just one last thing, Kath. Oh, sorry. This would likely require some policy updates.
Would it?
Well, if we're going to have, if we're going to talk about things like insurance...
On the one-to-one, right.
Right.
It would require some updates in policy if we're going to do that.
Liz?
I wanted to ask, so you're estimating that you'll need 800 for the fifth grade and the ninth grade. And when I was looking at the projected numbers, it's around 630 between both grades. So how do you decide on how much extra?
So I usually go with about 50 extra. So, I mean, that's, and again, those numbers are about because I take another look at the enrollment at the end of the, at the end of the school year before we do the ordering. And while we have the projected enrollments, I usually take our actual and then add a batch of, add 50 to it to ensure that we have enough on hand.
And the idea is that the kids also bring the Chromebook back to school with them?
Yes.
Okay. But we're still going to keep carts with Chromebooks in the classroom?
No. We'll have, we will have a small batch of Chromebooks that can be used for a student who does not remember to bring theirs with them, managed primarily through the library. who does not remember to bring theirs with them, managed primarily through the libraries and the library media specialists at each of the schools. And they'll, will end up going to charging stations in classrooms rather than carts. So again, there, there won't really be a need for the cart. And based on, and we've piloted, so we've piloted the one-to-one staying in the classroom at Irving Robbins on one of the teams this year. But in talking with some of the other school districts, students depend on these devices, so the number of students that are forgetting them is pretty small. Usually, the, the problem that they run into is they come in not charged. And so power cords, there would be a power cord and a charging station in each classroom to, to provide for that.
And this question may be for later, but when I was reading the educational specs, many of the classrooms have cart, carts in them with 30 to 50 Chromebooks. So that's why I was asking.
Thirty.
The question, are they expected to bring them back, or are we going to be having carts with Chromebooks in the classroom?
So we talked about this with the ed specs. Because this is not approved, this take-home one-to-one, we left the ed specs as is. The square footage of a cart in the classroom is, it's two foot by two foot. So we're not reclaiming a whole lot of space. So for now, the ed specs speak to our current needs with the current program we have. But if we were to move forward with this, then we would not be putting carts in the classrooms.
Thank you.
Liz?
So I have a question. This goes back to the equity piece. So I understand that not every student in Farmington has technology access, or maybe some households have technology access and it's just one computer in the house. And so every student in the house might not have access to a computer. But my question is more internet access. So if we're opening up this door to giving every student a Chromebook, how are we going to deal with it if we have a student that comes to us and says, well, I don't have internet access at my house?
So we have done some initial investigation into that through our schools. At this point, we don't have any students that have come to us claiming that. That said, we do have information for families on low-cost internet. In Farmington, Comcast is the cable provider. They do provide, I think it's, it's either a $10 or $15 a month, high-speed internet package for families that meet certain criteria. What we found is, in most cases, it's, it's, families have internet access, they just don't necessarily have a device.
Okay. I just didn't want that to be a block, you know, a blockage for.
No, if it came up, we would definitely, we would work with the family to, to figure a way.
And then, I guess, I just want to know, right now, if a student were to bring a Chromebook home, like, let's say a high school student were to bring a Chromebook home and they got onto their account, what would they be able to access?
Their filtering at home is current, if they're using a device, and this applies to, even if it's a personal device, if they are logging into their @fpsct.org account, our internet filter is being applied.
And what does that filter out?
A number of things. It depends on the, depends on the grade level.
So if they're in high school, can they get on YouTube?
Yes.
Okay.
They cannot get on gambling sites, pornography sites. There's categories for, for all of it. And then other sites that we've manually blocked as well. But that, we have different filter categories for different grade levels based on the curric, it's driven primarily by the curriculum. At the middle school, we've opened it up to certain health-related sites because of some of the health curriculum.
Anything that might be related to learning, they can get on.
Yeah.
Right?
One of the categories is drugs and alcohol. That's another one that, in health class, they, they do research on drugs and alcohol, even here at the high school. We blocked it initially and they couldn't get to any of their resources.
Right. Some of it's hard because you have, right. Now, if, what happens if a person comes, a student's family wants to opt into the insurance but has, you know, trouble paying for it? Or is that something they can work out with the school?
Yeah, we've taken that into consideration as well.
All right. And this will all be made known to everyone, like?
We don't.
If they ask about it.
If they, yes, yeah. So some of the things that, some of the measures that we take for, for families in need, we don't, we don't necessarily publicize what those are.
But if, if somebody asks about it.
We typically work through our school social workers and the principals in terms of identification. Or if a family were to approach us and ask, we would provide the necessary info.
Okay. All right. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Matt, can you just speak to the, the issue of the mandated technological literacy and the status of it? Is it hitting us, or?
So the state hasn't released any specific requirements for technology literacy. They're still working on it. What they have done is they've adopted the ISTI standards for both students and teachers as guidelines. And so what we've been working, the team that I referenced, which is our Technology Integration Specialists, myself and the department leader, we've been working on a set of standards in those four categories. And really, that, what that ends up looking like is, we're looking at where technology is being used in those manners throughout the rest of the curriculum. So we're meeting with other departments. If you're to look at the high school, we're meeting with social studies, English, math, to see where some of these things appear in the curriculum already, so that we're not reinventing this. This doesn't become a standalone technology activity. It's how can we, how can we best leverage that technology and learning with the existing curriculum? But at this point, the state hasn't, they keep indicating that they will, and they have released additional guidelines around computer science, and that's tied more to the engineering and programming. But they, they keep indicating that they are looking at having some sort of technology literacy standards as well. And there was a push 15 years ago now? Because it worked, there was a group of grad students and a professor at UConn that worked on a technology literacy certification that was being applied to both students and teachers, and it, it never really got off the ground. But there's grumblings of something like that coming.
Anyone else for Matt?
I'm sorry, I forgot this question. So I think I understand why you have it from fifth to eighth and then ninth to 12th. But when I was thinking about it, generally speaking, like 11th grade is kind of like the hardest, one of the harder years in high school, and eighth grade is harder than fifth grade as far as what you're doing. So when you get to 11th grade, you're going to have three-year-old technology. So would there be any, why, why can't you roll it out, like, give the newest Chromebook to an 11th grader and then wrap it around? Like, 11th grade gets the new Chromebook and then wrap it around?
We're not seeing, and it, so the, the Chromebook technology itself, the, the device itself, has not changed very much. It's still, while we're buying a new model, it still has the same speed processor and the same amount of memory in it. It just is, it's the newer model, that's all.
So it doesn't matter.
At this point, it doesn't. And it still receives all the updates. So to go, you know, to look at the difference between a new device and a three-year-old device, there really isn't that much difference. And that's in the devices that we're purchasing. Now, again, there are more expensive Chromebook devices, maybe larger screen, touchscreen. We're not going with touchscreens. Although the teachers have asked me several times, the cost has not come down on the touchscreens. Someday, if the cost comes down on touchscreens, then I will sit back here in front of you again and say, it's time to go to touchscreen, because we have seen areas where that could be beneficial as well. But the devices that we're purchasing today, there is no difference between a one and a three-year-old.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Matt.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you, Matt. You've always been really strategic and, you know, we really appreciate it. And I think it's really significant that the cost efficiencies that you bring to us are nationally recognized. We really appreciate that. And of course, the equity piece, it's really important to the board, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, item 6B, VOG update, Vision of the Graduate.
So Kim's going to provide an update of where we are. We're updating our vision of the graduate, and we have a process that's included in the packet. So Kim's going to just do a brief.
Let me just go back, I'm sorry. This, for the new members of the board, this packet, Matt's technology presentation, it's really good as we get into budget, if you kind of paperclip it. And it's a good reference piece to stick into your, your budget books as we go through, so I just wanted to mention that.
So I'm going to be speaking about a timeline that is in your packet following Matt's PowerPoint presentation slides. Just think, from my perspective, it's an exciting time to join the Board of Education because we are in the middle of our year-long, or a little bit longer than a year, process of thinking again about the Board's five-year goals, actually 10-year goals, they turned out to be, and our vision of the graduate. So it started, all of this work began about a year ago. The, the district administration began to start looking outside of our district, at other districts across the nation, across the world, really, reading articles, doing research, really thinking about what our students are going to need in their futures and how we can best prepare them for that. So as we began thinking about those things, we also wanted to be sure that we devised a timeline that would allow us to engage with our stakeholders and get their feedback and input as well. So we, as we did in 2010, when we created the vision of the graduate that we have now, we wanted to welcome families into this conversation, engage our students in this conversation, and of course, our faculty and staff. So if you look at this timeline, last, this, the summer, before the school year began, the administrative team spent most of their, our time at a two-day retreat focusing on this topic and started to plan the dates during which we, or meetings during which we would work with our faculty. That happened in August, at the Friday before the first day of school, I believe. So all faculty in their buildings engaged in a two-hour process. This coming week, at the secondary level, grades five through 12, parents have been invited to attend a forum, an evening forum, that will engage them in this conversation. Elementary is to follow the week after on January 21st. And then in February, we have another faculty and administrative process planned where we will take all of the feedback that we've collected. We will have met with students in, before then as well, and kind of pull it together, synthesize it, look for some common themes. We do already have some big ideas that we think need to become more prominent in the vision of the graduate. And then you can expect that we would be coming to you sometime in March, I think, and sharing a draft that we would then look for your feedback on. And by the April or, April or May of this year, we would be presenting you with a final draft, something that you could feel really proud of and excited about, that will launch us into our next five to 10 years' worth of work. So that's the process that we've been going through. We're hoping that many of our families are going to be interested in giving some input, either by attending these forums or simply just making a time to speak with the principal or emailing, or, you know, we've, we really welcome as much feedback as we can get about how we can take our students and, you know, really prepare them for their future. So any questions that you have, I'd be happy to try to answer about this process.
Any questions for Kim? Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda, item 6C, Engage Learning Update.
I'll just quickly go through a couple of, or a few items. Union School highlighted Hour of Code activity that took place in December. West District highlighted their first-ever family, family cultural celebration. Noah Wallace, second graders are learning about people who make a difference in the world. And East Farms highlighted their Challenge and Support Block. They're calling it WIN. What I Need Block to promote self-direction. And FHS recently hosted educators from China prior to the holiday break. So those are, are Engage Learning Updates.
Thank you, Kathy. Next item on the agenda, item 6D, Professional Appointments, Retirements and Resignations.
So we had two resignations. Both positions have been or are in the process of being filled.
Item 7A, Unfinished Business, item 7, Unfinished Business, A, Budget Impact, Budget Update. Alicia?
Hi. So, welcome to the new members of the board. We did a little budget orientation a few weeks back. And as I've been sharing with our previous board members since the fall, it's been a tight budget season. And as a DLC, we've really worked hard to be mindful of prioritizing, making sure that we're being really thoughtful about things that are mandated or necessary purchases, and also those with the least impact on students, of course. As Kathy mentioned, oh, no, that was in the meeting before this, it wasn't here, self-insurance has been an area that we monitor closely, but we have had catastrophic claims this year and trending higher than what was expected. So we continue to watch that closely. Special education is always shifting, depending on students moving in and out, or what students' needs are, and we have to be responsive to those. In addition, as I said previously, we're just trying to be thoughtful about things like replacing equipment that might not need to be replaced, or purchasing supplies that are not necessary as we continue to move throughout this year. So it's been a collaborative effort, and we've been working together, and we, we continue to, like I said, monitor closely. And unfortunately, that's where we are right now.
Any questions for Alicia? Thank you, Alicia.
The other thing, sorry, I just wanted to mention, too, is we did receive our audit from PFK O'Connor Davies, which is a new auditing firm. We haven't worked with these auditors before, but we just got the reports. And so there's one here for everyone, and they will come to a board meeting to, to share at a later date.
So at this time, we have visitors tonight, architects. So I'd like to make a motion to move Agenda Item 8E.
8A.
Motion? Motion?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most? So at this time, we will have.
Angela and Rusty, they're both from QA&amp;M. And they're here to share with us an update on our East Farms project. We are going to be asking you to approve the budget so we can move forward for the bidding process this evening.
Do we have to make a motion first before the presentation?
Well, we do, we have to make a motion to approve. I'm not sure about.
So you move, and then this is presented after the motion, then you, then you call the vote after the presentation?
Okay.
There's actually a motion on, on the page that we have, so you, we just have to.
Should I be?
But yeah, usually you make the motion, you second, and then we, and then.
There's a discussion.
So is the motion, I know I'm not the one to say it, but is it in there?
No, no.
Okay, if not, I have the wording.
All right, so that would be good if I could.
So this is, this is about the project. So this is something that needs to get done by the board. I'm just trying to find it here.
Whoever finds it first could.
Okay. Oh, I have it. There you go.
Okay.
Here's the motion.
All right. So can I have a motion to review and?
To approve.
And approve. Yeah. To review and approve final plans, to approve the plan for security vest. To review and approve final plans, to approve the plan for security vestibule and media center project for East Farms School as presented. Motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, we haven't, we shouldn't vote yet. We're going to first get the presentation and then we'll vote.
I'll take that back.
No, it's fine.
I take mine back too, yeah. You can have it.
So again, I want to introduce Angela Cahill and Rusty Malik. We've been working closely as a team to develop this plan that we're hoping to begin right after school ends at East Farms School.
Great, thanks, Alicia. Yes, we've been working hand-in-hand with the principal and with Alicia and Tim and also Art at East Farms to develop this design further. So East Farms Security Vestibule was originally thought of to be part of this past 2019 summer's work, but we recognized that it was a larger project than what could be handled during that cycle. And so we had worked with Alicia's predecessor, Vince, to defer that to this coming summer of 2020. Part of the main reason is, as I'm sure you all know the school, as you enter into that building, the office is not adjacent to the entrance, so it involves moving the office from where it is now into that art room to be adjacent to the main entrance. And that's a little bit of a snowball effect because moving the art room then out of there, that needs to go where the media center is, and then the media center will move over to where the office and workroom is. So I'll show you a little bit on the plans. The good news is that we had met with the state prior to the 2019 summer projects and sought funding from, partial funding from them for these security projects, and they were very open to that. And that's something that we hadn't originally anticipated, that you would get some reimbursement for that. You know, not a huge amount, but it definitely helps. And the other good news is, is even though there's a snowball effect with East Farms and you're not just creating a security vestibule, they have offered to put the entire project in that envelope of security improvement. So really, you're getting a new office, a new media center, moving your workroom and your art room and a couple of offices around, all under the umbrella of security projects. So that was very generous of the state to look at it that way. They understand the scope of the project. So we can just, and again, as Alicia mentioned, we've been working hand-in-hand to make sure that the plans are working in great detail with the group. So you're, and we can pass this around if you want. So the familiar, we photographed the existing entrance there. One of the main problems, as you might know, with that existing entrance is it's actually not, if there's a ramp, but it's not actually ADA compliant. It's a very big difference in grade between that front entrance door and actually by the time you get down to the sidewalk. So the new, here's a rendering here, the new ramp will be quite lengthy and that's just something that we have to provide. It's very important that the school is accessible and it's the law. So that's, that's part of what we're doing. And as a result, we'll have some slight modifications to that actual entrance itself, and that's good. We're going to extend the canopy a little and then the office will be there on the left and there'll be new windows to serve both the office staff that's going to sit in that new office and also the security guard that'll be sitting adjacent. So it'll, it'll solve those problems. And then as far as the plans go, there's a very, you know, piecemeal approach. So if the entrance is here on this side and the ramp is here, these are the three specific areas we're looking at. So where the art room was before, this becomes the office suite. So it has an open office, it has the nurse's office, and it has the principal's office as well as a small conference room. So that takes care of sort of their immediate needs, right, as you enter the building? And then as you proceed down that main corridor where the office was previously, that whole, and this teacher workroom, that whole area gets cleared out to become your new media center. The nice thing about that is that it faces directly out onto that recess area. And we're also able to put a large conference room in there, which is, is, needs to be replaced from your existing conference room. It's about the same size, so it'll fit that capacity that they need for PPTs and so forth. And then the area where the art room is going, where the existing media center is, gets developed as art room and the staff workroom, along with some individual offices that also exist currently here. So all of those folks will get natural light then from the courtyard and the art room will actually have that door to the courtyard that exists currently. We anticipate that during the summer, the contractor will be able to get the critical work done, which is the entrance ramp, the office modification, and the workroom and art room. It's very likely that they won't be able to complete the media center during the summer, and that's okay. The good thing about that is the contractor will be parking their trailer and vehicles out this side. We can completely section off that area. They can enter, come and go from that area without any interaction with the staff or students during the school year. So as that spills over into September, October, possibly November, they can be working completely independently. And the school has already started to plan for that, for not having a media center for those first few months of the school year next fall. Want to add?
No, I did a great job as Hannah. No, but overall, I mean, the scope of the project really hasn't changed from when we presented it a year ago. In fact, you know, what's taken us a while is that we really got into the details of the building and discovered a few things that we weren't anticipating, but we've been able to manage everything and, you know, I think the details are going to, have been designed in a way that we can manage our budget as we go along.
Great. Any questions for Rusty or Angela?
Good.
Okay. All right, so we need to vote on this motion. I have a motion to approve the plan for the security vestibule and media center project for East Farms School as presented.
Is it all in favor?
All in, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay. Great.
Thank you so much.
So you can, you know...
Great. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
It's like the big check.
Thanks for moving us up in the...
Yeah.
And I'll have them sign. Did you... Next item on the agenda, item 8, new item C, approval of committee charges. Okay, so I'm going to be passing out selection...
So every two years, we approve the committee charges, so this is the time that we do that.
So the, I think in your agenda, the Board has four charges, four committees, communications, policy, personnel negotiations, and...
Curriculum.
Thank you, curriculum. All of the descriptions are in the packet. And then along, let me pass these out, then you can look at this. And then along with that, they, we also assign liaisons to different organizations around town. So you can take these and look at them. Mary Paganini is going to be sending an electronic copy to all of you...
Need one more.
Tomorrow morning. So you can take, take a look at everything and prioritize the committee charges, you know, depending on your interests or talents, what you'd like to, what committees you would like to be involved in. And then the same, I'd ask you to prioritize the liaisons and it's a longer list. If you just want to do one through four, that's perfectly fine. Want to make sure you have all the information on them. The committee charges, the descriptions are in the agenda packet. But as far as liaisons, if you see something, especially the new members, and you don't know what it is, you don't understand the commitment, then just call me and I'll put you in touch with someone that's been on that committee and you can get more information. And we would like to have these selections finalized by the next Board meeting, so I think it would be, we have Martin Luther King Day, so technically Thursday, January 23rd would be, be great if we could get these back electronically. To Mary or to myself?
To you.
To me. Any questions of committee charges or liaisons? All right, next item on the agenda. We just have to approve. Ah, thank you. We could just use... Yeah, thanks. All right, so I need a motion to approve the Board of Education Committee charges as presented. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay. Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda, item 8, new item C, approval of capital budget, 2020, 2021.
So each year, we bring you this presentation, very similar to other presentations. This one, we're actually, it's an item that needs to be approved. We do start our capital budget prior to our operating budget. We provide this to our town manager. We have aligned our capital format to the town's format and, you know, I just really want to commend Alicia and Tim Harris. Tim Harris is our Director of Facilities and Matt Ross, our Director of Technology, for working together on this plan. It is a seven-year plan, so we go out several years and we have to be ready for the future. We did do a K-8 facility review that has really helped us when it comes to planning so far out. So we have a review for every school, every K-8 school, and that really gives us a roadmap for the projects that we bring forward. This does not include FHS because we have a separate process for FHS with the building committee, so you won't see a lot here for FHS. Probably the only thing you will see would be deferred maintenance and technology. Right? Because we have found that we have been spending quite a bit during the year with unanticipated issues here at this building. So we have built that into our capital. So I'll turn this over to Alicia, Tim, and Matt.
All right. So I just want to start by explaining the process a little bit because we do have new members at the table. So back in November, we invited many of you to join us in touring facilities to recognize and reflect on all that we were, had accomplished in the capital budget for 2019, which we'll share at the end. Right after that, we launched into preparing our 2020, 2021 budget. And developing the capital budget is really a strategic planning opportunity. Like Kathy said, we look at what have we accomplished? We've had things that we've been able to move ahead in and we rely on different drivers to help us as we move forward in preparing for the future. So again, we look at the facilities review, which is very comprehensive analysis of our schools, and that provides us with a roadmap of what we need to do next, what we need to prioritize, both short-term and long-term planning, and helps us with how we want to allocate our funds. And of course, we always want to maintain facilities that are safe, modern, compliant, up to code, and that support our educational programming. Then Tim and I met with principals and custodians at each site and we toured the facility and then we hear from them what their priorities are at the school base for improvement. And then we also review recommendations from the Farmington Police Department to ensure we're responsibly continuing to approve our safety and security measures throughout the district. And then as a central office team, we take the recommendations from those various professionals and begin to develop our comprehensive capital plan, which we're going to share with you We, the way our capital budget works is it's in buckets, and you'll see that in the presentation. So we have 10 different buckets and it's, our capital budget is part of the town's capital improvement program. So we are included along with engineering, police, highway and grounds, the town manager, et cetera. And the organization of buckets aligns with how the town approaches developing and implementing their budget. And over the years, having a partnership with the town has allowed us to take advantage of state reimbursements and utility grants when we can have joint ventures, which is beneficial to us both. So as you can see up there, those are the 10 buckets. Some of them are broad and we have projects underneath them, and then some of them are specific. So we pull out specific projects that may be, that are reimbursable by the state. So for example, we'll talk about Noah Wallace's partial roof replacement, IAR cafeteria addition and renovation, so certain projects are pulled out for that reason. So Matt's going to start with technology, take it from the top. Our, as you can see, whoops, I skipped. Our total request is about $2.5 million and we're going to talk through what our priorities are in each of the areas.
You can go to the next one.
Yeah, sure.
So kind of to fill in the blanks a little bit for the new, the new members as well, capital versus operating and why you may see, the question that always comes up is why are Chromebooks in operating and why are these things here? The items that are in capital in terms of technology are infrastructure-related, so they're bolted to the wall or to the floor in most cases. That's probably the easiest way to describe it. So our capital technology investments have focused on classroom upgrades, network upgrades, server upgrades, things that, the core infrastructure of the district and of the day-to-day classroom. These are the typical, these buckets, these are the sub-buckets under technology, are those that have existed for several years. The biggest item that you'll see here are, is classroom upgrades, and those classroom upgrades for the upcoming year are proposed at Irving Robbins and the high school, again. We've been working our way through the district over the past five to six years. We started at the K-4 schools, moved on to Westwoods, moved on to Irving Robbins, and over the past three years have tackled several rooms within the high school due to the aging infrastructure. The devices that we are installing into the high school have a much longer life, so there is the potential that they could be reused in, given the outcome of the high school building project. This summer's target here at the high school is the 900 hallway. So last summer, we did the 6 and 700s, or finished out the 6s and the 700s. The previous summer, we did the 800s. We've worked our way around the building, replacing in most cases, 10-year-old projectors that we can't even get lamps for any longer. The technology that we are installing in our classrooms these days is lampless technology. So whether it's a projector hanging from the ceiling, or it could be an LCD screen hanging on the wall, depending on the specific need in that particular room itself, there is a lower cost of maintenance, annual cost of maintenance, because we're not having to replace the lamps and things. The other piece to, to the capital budget that you'll see, which is a repeat again, is wiring. Last year, we proposed funding for Union School and Noah Wallace. We did complete Union School, but given all of the other projects, Noah Wallace is still in process and we're looking to kick that off as soon as school gets out in June. But I am also request, I'm requesting funding to start the planning process for Westwoods. And kind of looking out to the future, you will see Irving Robbins come up in, in subsequent years as well. And really, the replacement of that wiring is tied to, again, advancements in the technology and the age of the wiring and the ability to put higher speeds over that wire to provide a higher-speed internet to the end user.
Thanks, Matt. So the second project that you'll see is the Noah Wallace partial roof replacement. You'll, you can see in this visual here, these are the two sections that remain to be replaced. They were installed in 1999, so they're 21 years old. And those, those two will complete the roof replacement at Noah Wallace School. So District Ride Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing. Those projects include Noah Wallace steam heat repiping, IAR heat AC RTU replacement, that is a continuing project, IAR building automation control, Westwoods cleaning and insulation of the boiler room piping, Westwoods dehumidification project. Last year, we did the design for that project and this year, we want to implement that. And then funds for deferred maintenance due to the current condition of FHS. We have some pictures of what it looks like. This is what the current steam heating looks like at Noah Wallace School. This is the Westwoods Cleaning and Insulate, it's really a re-insulation of the boiler room piping that's needed. And these are the IAR heat and AC. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but is this the completion of, of IAR with all of the student spaces that need AC?
All of the student spaces.
Okay, so that would complete that. For structural and architectural projects, the West District, this was shared last year, but West District CAF and corridor flooring, IAR corridor flooring, East Farm soffit frame repair, and the Union entry door. The West District CAF and corridor flooring, that project includes funds for, in case we have to do asbestos abatement, is that whole, the whole process of designing and monitoring, if that's needed. We have some photos here of what the flooring looks like in the CAF, so there is significant, as you can see, significant cracks and lifting. And this is what IAR looks like. And that's the East Farm soffit, both from the inside and the outside. For security, we have some projects that we've pinpointed at certain schools where we'd like to continue with security window film that we've done at some sites, but we want to, we've identified other areas. We've, we've worked on this with the police. Tim works with, Tim McKenzie, and we've identified projects that we'd like to, or need to advance, barriers and bollards, and fencing in certain areas, window barriers, and access control. Code and safety compliance, again, trying to keep our, ensuring that our schools are safe and up to code. So that would be replacing the East Farms fire doors and the crash bars. You know, if you can imagine when you press the, the long bars, upgrading those and replacing them. Same thing with the Union exit and fire doors, and replacing the Union fire alarm panel as well. The IAR cafeteria addition and renovation. So this year, we're proposing to begin the designing of the project. So similar to what we saw or heard from Q A and M, it would be a similar process this year. We'd hope to engage in the designing so that next year, we could propose what the project would be. This is something I know that was, has been mentioned and planned for in previous budgets. Just as far as what the advancing, the IAR CAF, what would that provide for us? So the CAF right now is undersized. It is almost a driver of the school schedule, so we could expand the number of students that we have in lunch waves, which would allow more time, instructional time. So there's definite programmatic benefits to that. It would also allow us to upgrade kitchen and the foods that we can provide for students. So it's definitely one that's needed. So we're hoping to engage in the process of the actual redesign. Any questions about that?
I do, sorry.
Go ahead.
I had, I had thought that that was going to be proposed for this summer, originally.
To happen this summer?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that, I mean, there's, we haven't even engaged in the process of creating the design yet, but it was definitely in an out year.
Okay.
But I can look back in that, at that.
You've probably seen it because the capital is a seven-year.
Plan?
Yeah, I just, for some reason, because I know they're, they're already having to like,
Ow!
I mean, they're having to split up kids, like, half lunches, like, right now, so.
Yeah, there's eight shifts.
It's like, really causing them a lot of problems, so, okay.
You know, and Alicia, when you say, you know, it has programmatic implications, it is educational implications.
Yes, that's, yes, absolutely, absolutely. It would allow more instructional time. It would allow us more flexibility with how we could reimagine the schedule. Kim has looked at that schedule every which way possible. And so not only is it undersized and overcrowded, but it's, it's really causing a problem, to say the least. Replacement of vehicles, again, this is something we've been, we have a comprehensive out-year projection for how we cycle through replacing our vehicles. We would, up next is a replacement of a 2006 Ford van that we have that is in need of repair, to say the least. And so we continue to look at that each year and make sure that we're moving forward and keep, you know, our upkeep. FF and E, so furniture fixtures and equipment. Over the years, we've, again, had a very comprehensive plan on how we've replaced and upgraded our furniture throughout the district. We have one grade level to complete in the elementary schools, which is second grade, and we'd also like to begin this work at Irving Robbins. So you'll see that, we have some photos of what some of the furniture is currently looking like at Irving Robbins, and... So we're proposing, starting with five classrooms for next year, and then continuing that in out-years.
Alicia?
Yeah.
How long does classroom furniture last? Like, what's the life expectancy?
Good question. I mean...
That's probably 30 years.
Oh, at least, yes.
If you purchase something new, that's your expectation that it's going to last for 30 years?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's the expectation it could look like that after 30 years.
Right, I mean, if you, really, these are just taken this week, and they're not. Yeah.
I just, I just looked at last year. So the cafeteria addition was planned for 2021, '22. So we're kind of just keeping, yeah.
Oh, that's so good. Sooner the better.
But it was there.
It was there.
I knew it was, I remember.
Yeah.
I remember.
And along with vehicles and classroom furniture, we're also looking at cafeteria equipment. So again, across our schools, looking at what we have for kitchen equipment and what needs to be replaced and repaired. So we have two projects. One is the steamer at FHS, and the other is the West District convection oven that we're hoping to replace over time. And as Kathy said, and we mentioned, we, we work on a seven-year projection for capital projects, and so in our out-years, upcoming transportation, the IAR CAF addition and renovation, telephone upgrades. So although we don't have a project planned for 2020, 2021, we are beginning to build our capital because we know when we are planning an upgrade district-wide. So those are some of the examples of projects that we're planning in the future. And then, ending with a celebration, many of you know this, who were with us in the fall when Tim reported on capital projects or got to tour the schools, but these are all the things that we completed in 2019, 2020, and many of them are finished and a few still in process that are currently, because we're in, still in the budget season, that we're moving towards completion now. So we've done a lot over the past year, to say the least, or years, and we're proud of that work, and we're hoping to continue to keep our facilities maintained and improved. And any questions?
If, like, Matt, I guess for you, the screens, the lampless things and the things that you're in your capital budget for the high school especially, are those things that could be moved if there's a new building or renovation of any kind, or if there's any need to move them?
Yes, anything we're looking at, if, if it's anything for the high school, that's an investment.
All right. So anything in the capital budget that, for the high school, is movable? All right, just so people know.
Yep. All right. Questions for Alicia?
I just, I noticed a lot of those are checking off on the K-8 facilities, and I appreciate that.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 capital funding projects as presented.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Tensions? Thank you. All right, so next item on the agenda is item eight, new item D. Review of central office educational specifications, first reading. That means we are going to vote on it tonight, but we're going to see it again. So this is the first reading. And also back to Alicia and Tim's capital report, that's another great document to tuck in your, your budget books.
They want to explain why we have a first reading and a second reading.
Oh, someone from policy would have to do that.
Well, it's required, it's required by law. To, to approve anything like that, you have, anything like this, there are, or, or charter and state statute requires that something like this has to be presented. You know, the same experience in town council, you have that?
Oh, yeah.
Do necessarily first and second reading.
That's what we have to do, so.
So, and it's, it helps too, because if you had questions that we couldn't answer and we would need to have someone come back and, and provide information, it does give the opportunity for that to occur. And it's like, all of our policies are a first and second.
And, and we do this too, because this, the, the ed specs are required for state reimbursement, so. Okay, so, item eight, new item D. Review of central office educational specifications, first reading. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a, I have a question.
Oh, yes.
On it, on, on page four, where you have the space descriptions and the quantities, I, I might be wrong, but it looks like you have three assistant superintendent offices? Because it says, yeah, it says, page four. It says Assistant Superintendent Office Two at 250, and then underneath Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations One.
Oh, yeah. That's a good catch.
It might be for...
So I was just curious what that is.
Kara and our assistant.
Yeah, but, no, above that is the Assistant Superintendent of School Admin Offices Two. So there's one for each of your admins.
You're right. So there's, so.
You have an extra.
The two should be a one.
We'll, we'll check it, just because CSG did them, so I just want to make, so we'll check those, but it does look that way. And I, I, yeah, I'm not sure if it was, I think it was, where do you see the assistant?
It's above it, it's right under BOE Conference Room, it's assistant.
Yeah, because these are the secretaries, and then, oh, that's where the problem is. Okay, yes, I see it now. Yep.
Assistant.
Yeah.
We got one extra.
Assistant Superintendent Office should be one.
Two Kims and Alicia, is what it, the way it's written.
The way it's written. But is there an office for, for Beth? I'm wondering if maybe that's where it got confusing, the change of...
Yeah, that may be the issue.
That might be it.
Maybe that's her.
Because she's not in there anywhere.
Yeah, so then it's Beth.
They just...
So that's, but we need to just clarify it in the area. So we'll clarify it for the next reading.
You're right.
That was a good catch.
Yeah, thank you.
It's, yeah, it's just mislabeled.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we all set? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Next item on the agenda, item eight, E. Review of Farmington High School Education Specifications, first reading. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Just want to make a comment that these specs include a culinary program, which people really should know, that that's something that the board has fought for a better part of seven or eight years to bring it back, and this is an opportunity to do that. You know, it's a very popular program amongst the community, so this is a big deal. So, that, and I also note that there's a, that they did a nice job scaling the second gen from what the original, from our last go-around. They did a nice job of kind of scaling it down a little bit. But that was also really, really a good, like, change. You can, so if you were following the first project, as a parent of this project, you can see in various spots where they made really good changes, I thought, to reduce size, or square footage, more precisely.
It probably would be a good time, I don't know, Kathy, if you can give some insight, because we, these were done last year, what any, what the changes are from the last time that we, we went through the ed specs?
So we had done a 10-year projection specifically, because it's a requirement when you're doing a project like this, and we had done a 10-year projection before with the last project, but you have to have an updated one in order to get reimbursement from the state. So we did the 10-year projection, and in 2029, we are projected to have 1,404 students, and that is how we calculate the square footage. So this reflects, I believe, 238,000 square feet because of that projection. And at this point, and, and the last time we went through this as well, you know, we initially approve ed specs, we go through the process, there is a selection of an option, and then we start to do the schematic design, and sometimes the ed specs change a bit. Some of it has to do with the cost estimate. Well, that's a very high cost, can you find some efficiencies, that type of thing? And any change to these would come back to you for your approval, once again. And we had a couple of times where we improved the ed specs in the last process. So I think, you know, culinary is one. That is back here, we have additional classrooms in this, in these ed specs because of the enrollment increase. We want to make sure we have a sufficient number of classrooms so that, there is an increased number of classrooms here. We also, the Black Box Theater would be part of the ed specs. That is an opportunity for more classroom space during the school day, so it's not something we would just use after school. And on the weekends, it would be a space that we could actually hold classes in. So that, that's an exciting addition. I'm trying to think of any other areas, but those were areas that we were able to place back in. I think we increased the collab space in each of the potential areas where the classrooms are. So, you know, at this point, just like most of our, our schools, we do try to find collaborative space for our students to do projects together, to work together, and this would increase that slightly. But it's something that I think enhances the project quite a bit and would enhance programming at the high school. Those are some of the highlights. You know, much of the ed specs are similar to what you've seen, but I think we have some enhancements here that are really exciting for our students. And like Bill said, you know, we did have to move away from culinary due to budgetary issues, and now we have, you know, significant issues with the culinary space because they're, it's not ADA compliant. So it's really held us back from, you know, having that program back up and running. So, you know, this is something that traditionally we have had at the high school and something that's of interest to our students and our community.
Okay.
I have, I have one question. No, no, no. On the total square footage summary, it's on page 74, I just want to clarify what it means, because at the end, it says central office, if included, add the 9,000 square feet. So does that mean, is it included in the 238,000 square feet?
No.
So, we're deciding whether or not to put it in?
That's what, that's what we're going to learn from our architects in the next few weeks, whether they chose to include it.
I see, because I was just trying to understand if included, what that meant.
Yeah, so that's an additional, because it really wouldn't be fair if we took up student space.
Okay.
So it's over and above the 238.
I see, okay.
Everyone all set? Can I have a motion to approve the Farmington High School Educational Specifications, first reading? I did that, okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You did the central, sorry about that, go ahead. Oh, because we're on high school now. Oh, okay. So review, can I have a motion to approve the Farmington High School Educational Specifications, first reading?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all set. Next item, nine, consideration of Assistant Superintendent in Finance and Operations Report.
Okay, so, feels funny to be talking about November when we're projecting 2020, 2021, but we are. So you have the November financial statement. Trying to think if there's anything to highlight. We were able to adjust our public utilities encumbrance after we saw how we were trending, so that was good news. If there's anything else I wanted to share with you? If there's any, any questions about it?
Just general question.
Yeah, go ahead.
We were showing at this point right now, a projected surplus of $24,367, but we're getting hammered in the services account. Where's the good news?
Yeah, right.
In other words, I'm saying is, where are we finding the surplus, the fact that there is indeed a surplus?
Well, we're, as I said before, yeah, these are good questions. We've done a real freeze on spending. Exactly. Yeah, I mean, we, once we saw how things were trending, Alicia, you know, worked with the DLC, and we just said, only really mandated purchasing should occur, because we have to manage this issue that we're facing with some significant budget drivers that Alicia went over. I mean, this has been a very, very challenging year, and I have to commend our, the administrators, our faculty and staff, they have been so collaborative and partners in this, this has been very challenging. So. So things like professional trainings, overtime, just holding.
I mean, people watching at home should know that. We're, you know, we're, in our services account, we're, you know, we're over budget $585,000, and that's through no fault of this district. In other words, it's not because it wasn't properly assessed or properly budgeted for, it's because state law and federal law requires us to provide services to students who come into district that we don't necessarily plan for. And so when people are watching at home, they really need to be mindful of that, and it's commendable that you guys continue to do what you always do, you tighten the belt, and you lock it down, and you continue to provide, you know, fantastic services, you know, in this kind of a budgetary environment, so, great job.
Thank you. We look at it every single week together, what the changes are, you know, and how can we adjust any way possible? And again, with least impact on students, so. And you can see a similar trend in health insurance, if you look, yes, you know, at the last page, how we're trending over this year, which Alicia had mentioned. Compared to last, last year, and also what we projected.
No reason to harp on all the negativity.
All right, we all set? It's Alicia. Next item on the agenda, item 10.
We have to approve it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Motion to approve, a motion for approval of the financial report dated November 2019.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, 10, reported board chair. Thank you for your patience. I really appreciate it, I really, thank you.
Did a good job.
And...
It's a lot to take in.
Yeah. And I just, you know, want to remind everybody to get back your selection of committee charges and liaisons, and again, if you have any questions, please call me, and I'll send you in the right direction to talk to someone about the different organizations and charges. So really, just what I want, to make sure everyone has on their calendars are the important dates coming up for the Farmington High School Building Committee. Is everyone at this table on the email distribution? Anyone not on the email distribution? Okay, that's good. So Wednesday, January 8th, you probably all know this, we're going to be reviewing the maintain option, two presentations. January 15th, the renovate is new option, two presentations, and on January 22nd, the new building option. So those, those are really important dates for board members to stay in, if any possibility you can make it, it would be great to come for summer, all of the meetings. At 6:30, yeah. 6:30 here. Yeah. That's really it. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.